Six thirty, I'm gonna call the Joshua City Council to order. We do have a formal present. This is an open meeting subject to the open meeting laws of the state of Texas. As I said, we do have a formal present. If anybody is listening online and they would like to ask any questions or particular times, there's a little flag that you can push and it will notify the city secretary and she will get your message and make sure it is read. At this point in time, I'm gonna ask Scott Kimble, the leader of the pledge along by the dedication, Pastor Andrew Wuppenberger from the Joshua Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Father, we come to you this evening so thankful for your goodness. Or we thank you for your son, Jesus Christ, God on the cross to save us from our sins. Or we thank you for the fact that we live in this great nation where we experience so many freedoms, freedom to speak our minds, the freedom to meet on a Sunday morning and worship you. Lord, it is just your grace and mercy that's put us in the United States of America. Lord, I thank you for putting me and my whole life in the state of Texas. And Lord, I appreciate many of the conservative values of Texas. And Lord, I pray today for the city council, all the leaders that are here, all those that have put in their time and energy to make this meeting function. And Lord, I pray that you'd give each and every person wisdom. I pray that you would help them to vote and discuss things righteously from a standpoint of honoring you. And Lord, we will look forward to seeing the decisions made here today. We will look forward to see them bring glory to you. We pray for our police officers, our paramedics, all of our first responders. Keep them safe. Lord, seeing small town Joshua is not that big a threat. But I remember just a few months ago, there was a big thing that happened here. So, Lord, these men need protection, these ladies need protection. And so, Father, I pray that you bless our community, bless our country, bless our state. We ask that you do this in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
All right, we'll switch it up a little bit. Chief, you wanna introduce the folks?
Mr. Mayor and Council, we've got two new officers introduced to you tonight actually. So, we've got Officer Davis Watson. Officer Watson comes to us from Millsboro, his department, has got two and a half years roughly with the experience down there, we're able to bring him onboard. He is rapidly going through training, field training, and should be on his own by the weekend. So, he'll be assigned a day shift, but very happy to have him onboard. And then I've got Officer Tyler Smith, I don't want to stand in front of him, I apologize. Officer Tyler Smith comes back to us. Officer Smith started here in twenty sixteen, I believe, twenty fifteen. As an officer here, got to start here and left to go to Hood County a few years after that. But he's elected to come back and we're very happy to have him back. He has also brought with him a very unique asset to the city and really Johnson County. We don't have this here in Johnson County, so Joshua will be on the cutting edge if you will. But officer, and we are gonna, we are gonna make him an officer, we're gonna get him a badge and have him join the ranks of the family of the police department. But this is K nine camo. Camo is a narcotics dog, a tracking dog, it's not a bite dog. So, that does eliminate some of the liability from the city. But he is certified in narcotics and tracking, which are gonna be a huge asset to the city, by the community. So, I'd like to introduce or reintroduce Officer Tyler Smith and K nine camo. You too. But I would like to say, if camo comes to us. Yeah, we're very fortunate to get a K nine camo, very valuable, expensive city. The dog was donated to Officer Tyler. He was a supporter of Hood County and most of the terror. We are working on that. In fact, Officer Tyler has secured a cage set up. We're gonna retrofit it, don't guard existing vehicles, we use exclusively. Dedicated K nine to K nine U. That's really awesome.
No, he's only three, so he's a shepherd mammal. Yes, he is hyper.
Welcome back. All right, we'll go into the work session. First items, a few discussed questions, late budget report and financial statement for September twenty twenty one. Does anybody have any questions on the financial statement?
I guess I did. Mike, I don't think you can compare this, but looking at some of these line items on here, especially on these revenue side, it looks like we overestimated on several line items here. That was reflected in the new created budget, correct?
Yes, partially.
I mean, some of them, we were, we felt short seventy, seventy-five percent of what we had budgeted. So, we felt short twenty-five percent of the property tax penalties. And I know those are just wild guesses and just probably some poorly used or whatever. But overall, looking at this end budget, I am amazed at how well the city has done this last year with our budget. I think everybody, every person that's involved with this budget, every manager, every department head, whatever, needs to be committed to keeping things in line. It has been fantastic to see this happen.
They have all stepped up. And I think the ending, the remaining budget balance on the sheet at three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. Now, obviously, there's still some last minute stuff that's gonna be coming through. That number will drop a little bit, but I think that we will probably be returning somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, three fifteen, three hundred and twenty-five thousand back to the general fund. I don't think that there's that much that's remaining outstanding. We'll know more in another two or three weeks, we'll get all that in as y'all are gonna start.
Yeah, has all the adjustments been made or are these pretty much our final figures other than these last minute things? There's, normally at the end of the year, we have a few, it just was put in this item and shouldn't have been in that item.
Yeah, well, this bottom number is accurate. We've not moved things into, what we normally allow them to do is they can move money and use it, but they can't add to what they requested. So, the three seventy-six is a good number based on where we are right now. We'll clean up the budget at the, when we do amend it, to amend the end year end. There will be a few things there. That'll give us a better picture of exactly what was spent in each line item so that we can compare that to this year. There won't be a whole lot of changes, but the biggest change is gonna be the COVID, cleaning up all the COVID expenses. We still have all that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Not, just to proceed with that, they don't get, do you have paid and volunteer firefighters?
They may be, they were on one little bit ago, let me check some.
We can come back to that. Anybody have any questions regarding regular sessions? Next is public forum. Did we have anybody that wants to speak under public forum?
No, sir.
The next, we have a consent agenda for the city council, approval of the opioid amendment, retaining the street and updating the ordinance for the codes setting within here. Anybody wanna split out the consent agenda or? All right, I'll entertain a motion. And everybody lost their bet on that one. Next, regular session is discuss and consider and take possible action. Oh, I'm sorry. All votes in favor? Motion carries seven zero. All right, carry the white. Regular agenda, discuss and consider, take possible action of an ordinance by the city council of the city of Joshua, Texas, authorizing the issuance of city of Joshua, Texas, general obligation, refunding bonds, search and equipment.
Pardon the interruption. They are not here yet. They're in Crowley.
Okay.
Coming over here soon as they're finished.
We'll watch this one around.
I think you might for the next two, three.
We're gonna go to number four.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Chief's not here, but he's able to deal with sale.
We got all, he's on his way. Wait, were you going about your thing?
All right, we'll go to number four, discuss and consider, take possible action of approving apparatus proposal for one star emergency group for twenty twenty-one, E one twenty-five hundred gallon tanker with high food chassis and then have six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and authorize the city manager to execute and agree to the proposal.
Mr. Mayor, actually, the, was it my mistake? Line item three is the action that approves the funding for this truck. So, I guess you can do them either way, but either way, we're gonna have to do them both. But if you wanna hear the pitch about the fire truck now while the chief is on his way.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
He is proposing, this was placed in the CIP last year in lieu of the purchase of a ladder truck. Chief Griffith, after having some time here on the ground and been able to evaluate some things, believed that the biggest threat was to retire an aging backup engine with another one and also fulfill the need for some additional water capacity. So, he's elected to move away from the ladder truck and go with a combination pumper tender. This'll be similar to the truck that was purchased a few years ago. It'll have, I think, a fifteen hundred GPM pump, am I right? But it'll carry twenty-five hundred gallons of water, whereas the current engine, I think, carries seven fifty. The one it's replacing carries seven fifty. This is gonna help us in areas where water pressure's been underserved, certainly in areas out of the county. And we also retain our points in the ISO rating to have this, this truck in the fleet. And it'll retire, like I say, one of the older engines that I think is well over twenty years old. And I guess we'll either, I don't think, are they trading in another truck? Has there been a conversation about that? I think he was gonna sell it outright. So, we'll be retiring one, one fire truck and then purchasing this. The people here from the manufacturer's reps are here. Y'all have questions, ask them if they brought one. They did not. But these are the same folks that built our last engine. It's an E one engine. So, if y'all have any questions, I'm sure they can, happy to answer them for you.
Now, does this one have, I know our other truck has a phone. Does this, do it have a phone as well?
Will it have a cabs unit? Okay, I think that's what you're talking about.
Well, we've got like feed water from that one, the other truck that needs to fix with this stuff?
Yes, sir. Also has a drop tank. It's a high roll of lifts and they definitely save them. A dump tank, dug into neutral, trucks coming in dropping water and leaving. That's on the truck as well. And it's a hard truck to get with that.
What size is that?
So, what size is the drop? I believe it takes a three thousand.
And then when would we, I know, place the work with the truck?
Right now, they're quoting three hundred and sixty day build time. Our industry is, it's like the lightest experiencing of issue components and things. That could come in sooner than later, but we just really right now, that's best guess is three sixty. Where are they at? Go cattle or?
The build time is based on a lot of when we actually finalize the order. So, when we guys approve it tonight and the process would be, we sit down with the chief. Pre-build meeting, pre-build conference where everything gets finalized, that's sent to the chief. Once he signs off on it, at that point, that's when it goes into the production. So, it's three sixty from then, not from.
It shouldn't be like that.
Shouldn't.
Trevor, do you want to ask me a question?
I was looking through the equipment breakdown you had there. I come up with a couple of things I'm just a little bit curious about. We are a semi-royal area. The tires that we have on here are highway tires. What happens when we go off road? Are those tires gonna?
This truck doesn't go off road.
Twenty-five hundred gallons of water and a test of head, you do not want to help.
It will sink, I promise.
Yeah. And then there was an item on here about installing charging units for wireless headphones. Do we already have the headphones or are they not part of the equipment that comes with this?
They, I would think that the headphones would come, but they're made, I'd have to look, see, I'd inspect out, but they, we have them in the current engine, but I don't think they're wireless. I think these are wired.
Well, the, depending the, the charger's form, but it didn't say anything about the headsets themselves. So, there's no wrong with this equipment. It was the setting thing about the four headsets.
Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I bet we can get them in there. I'll put that down here to visit with the chief and that, but I know the, I know the current truck came with it.
They are not showing any work, so I'm not sure what conversation the chief had with Jeff on those.
I just, I just see where my list is.
Yeah, well, there are.
And then it says the Axis Smart Truck Technology includes roof mounted antenna and five year date plan. And that's for the only, the E one chassis in the USA, so that, so soon we're getting that. What happens after the five years? What's the cost still?
The only cost is for a cell car. We can't predict what your cell service could cost five years from now. We cover a data plan for five years and then after that.
It just goes to our cell phone.
Yes, it certainly has a rising part in it, but you can choose any carrier you like.
Hopefully, by then we'll have a carrier that you can actually service all of the city.
Wanna bet?
Yeah, hopefully we started on that, yeah. And then the, there's the, what I was asking about the headsets. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you. Said the head cup holders up front, this thing thing that you guys.
I give you a reasonable.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
I just have a, if you have a quick question, it's for the chief. E one, is that the only one that we got? Like an estimate for? Try to see what you want, please.
Yes, consistency. Get what you want. You go out and do a good project. Go for a bid process. If you love it, then I mean, I wouldn't want, want drawback. It would draw back with the consistency, the system policy. I live in departments around Texas. You buy Twitter, one brand, Los Angeles, Los Angeles. Right, Los Angeles, five all years. So, is this consistency helps you better to go to one place where it's fit?
Does E one have a repair facility reasonably close by? I think one of the other ones, Pierce, one of the other ones, we had, it's way back. It didn't work so much.
Yeah, Pierce, I know there's a place in Death and I think they may have one close to our. Excuse me, and we had a lot of issues dealing with the maintenance jobs.
Probably will love it. Ours is in Wilmer, I have a service center, we have two thousand square foot facility there. We also have road mechanics that have service trucks that they can go out and be minor repairers and maintenance, things like that, union stations as well, as well as pump testing and things like that. You know, be a part of the team to help, you know, the citizens of Joshua to have.
Ed, recently been so. How old is it? About what, six, seven years old? Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we go ahead and vote on this or do we need backup?
No, I mean, we're gonna take action on the other items. My, they're all gonna be done.
All right. So, let's take a motion then. Sorry, we need room. Now, second, got a motion by Scott Kimble, taken by Merwin Stine to approve the apparatus proposal for one star emergency group for twenty twenty-one, E one twenty-five hundred gallon tanker with high food chassis and about six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars. In further discussion, all votes in favor? Motion carries seven zero. Guess we should ask how it's been paid for.
It's right here.
All right, let's go back then to the work session, chief. We got one out of there for you for the, something on the action, get paid and volunteer.
Now, we are consistent right now in terms of the number of people we have. We haven't lost anyone in quite some time. We're trying to, and we are working with our volunteers, but it is gonna be more of a suspension. We're not saying, first of all, we don't have a lot of people that was in saving. So, it's not easy for them to respond from home. Most of our calls are medical emergency. And they're responding to that, so it's really, it's not beneficial to come to home, save from their home. So, what we're trying to do is find those, I, we just can't seem to get them to shift. We have somebody to do, and we have somebody to do. But overall, I mean, we have a group of people and we're not having to choose responding to incidents, everything. Seven fires, we have the labor force, so it's not a problem, so we're eight. We are going to be focusing in the future on the treatment, on the local people. We're going to target high schools and the boroughs in mind as a fire academy. It's like, we pay all backdrop support. Younger people. Looking at national statistics, volunteers are a problem of last. Not sure exactly what about the new generations. Heard they're not the volunteer, but it's just, it's not just us. In fact, I was at the fire chiefs meeting in John County last week. This topic came out, impressive of all places. And I always say, press never has an issue keeping volunteers, but they want to find out, you know, ideas of what's here. We're not losing them, we're just grabbing at. So, that's our, that's our role as well. I really don't have any issues with the break. It's been very supportive. If you're all training, I can speak. I'll be glad to take questions. You ready to have a question?
Go ahead.
You said a lot, you know, young people. I know several of my students who are volunteer.
Some over.
So, it's fine, you know, serving school. Is there age?
Well, eighteen really, but if they're vocal out, I think they come up, participate, learn. Then they get, you know, probably aren't helping to the carload. And we'll, we'll make them part of the family. They can come up and do lots of things. For the economy of the after.
Would you like to come to high school and speak? Or kind of, what you said, set up something to introduce?
Yeah, we do want to, but I wanna get everything prepared first. Things I want to order to help this frequent process. I wanna, I wanna really look professional, I want to do that. And I've got a new lieutenant, he's actually a local firefighter, he's a local firefighter. And he's very anxious to get in the process. So, we wanna impress kids, make everybody look sharp and uniform and prepare. Hand out some glossy handouts, you know, that look like they even know what we're talking about. Draw them that way. So, yes, we absolutely do. I would certainly be asking you for contact.
Seal junior college checking program for fun?
Yes, they have.
Are you working with them too or?
We have, we're gonna look at different abroad stuff.
You were talking about getting some off duty firemen to fill in for our pay officers so then we go on vacation, take days off, so on and so forth. How's that coming along? Have you got that all set up and established from there?
No, we, we talked about part-time.
Yeah.
I'm getting ready to start advertising for that. That program was really to someone for night shift, or shift at night. There's only one person in the station. I want to have an additional person in that. It's one, I don't feel very comfortable with one person filling in at night. And that's primarily what I want that for. We have been able to get our volunteers to fill in for that, to fill out the COVID, the pay guys. We had management problems and the ships filled by volunteers.
Speaking of which, I'm glad it's well for you in that circumstance, of your area.
All right, anybody else have anything? All right, thank you, chief, appreciate it. So, I guess we wanna still hold off for one, two, and three. Fill the guys' figure on the bond stuff.
Um. You can do two and three, uh, I mean, that really doesn't have anything to do with the refunding.
All right.
Uh, those are just agreements to pay ourselves back once these things come due.
All right. All right, we'll go to item number two then. Discuss, consider it a causal action on reimbursement resolution, establishing the intention of the city of Dawson, Texas, reimburse itself with prior lawful expenditure of funds related to construction, equipment, equipping, various city improvements, from proceeds to one or more series of active debt obligations issued by the city for authorized purposes. Mike.
This is a resolution that would allow the council, should we, uh, in the future elect to build on the property that was purchased out of those funds, you would be able to reimburse the general fund for the purchase of that property. That's all it does.
Now, is this sort of a catchall, if there are other things down the road to show, goes, or is it, or we need to simply say this is for the land?
This, this, well, that's what it's put together for, it's just for the land, we, we don't own any other property. Oh, we don't owe on any other property. This would just be a resolution that we could pay the, the general fund back if y'all chose to do that. You don't have to when you get the funds. Um, it's, it's your option.
Sure. And I, we don't have to discuss about it, it was for the land, okay? Anybody have any questions?
No.
Oh, thank.
No. And this, this doesn't increase, increase any debt, it doesn't change any time of debt or anything like that?
No, no, this, you're not borrowing money for this, just to say that, say in two years, y'all decide you want to build a police station or whatever, out of that bond, you could pay yourself back the money for the purchase of the land. If you chose to, that's it.
All right, I'll entertain a motion. One second. We got a motion by Merwin Stone, taken by Mike Kidd, to approve the resolution in section, in the intention of the city of Dawson, reimburse itself with prior lawful expenditure. Any other discussion? All votes in favor. Motion carries seven zero. Item number three, discuss, consider it a causal action on reimbursement resolution, establishing the intent, the city of Dawson, reimburse itself with prior lawful expenditure of funds, related to purchasing various capital equipment, and proceeds to one or more series of active debt obligations issued by the city for authorized purposes. Mike.
This is the same type of resolution as before, but this includes, uh, two pieces of equipment that are in the budget this year, purchased in C I P. One was the fire truck, um, and then the other is the, uh, a tractor mower, uh, that's going to go to public works. And so, we'll do that with a tax note. Interest rates are significantly lower by going that route, that was our best option. Uh, we're not issuing that note at this point, um, we'll work that out with Samco when that time comes. Uh, this just allows us to pay the city back once we get that.
All right, Chief. And again, it doesn't increase overall debt or, on my bill of year.
That's right.
A motion by Mike Kidd, taken by Robert Fludding, to approve the reimbursement resolution, establishing the intention of the city of Dawson, reimburse itself with prior lawful expenditure of funds, related to purchasing various capital equipment, from proceeds to one or more series of active debt obligations. Any other discussion? All votes in favor. You go. All right, we'll go to number five. Discuss and consider possible action or resolution of ending the personnel policy. Remember?
You have any questions?
Question?
Yeah. And I'll, with, um, there are some words that are ran together in some of this, and I'm gonna clean it up once they're approved, but it's sort of a burning, it's back and forth, from word to PDF, to PDF, the word, this, so, I will, I won't change any content, but I will go through it again for, um, public view.
Oh, a couple of things that I had, one of the, uh, some friends give out the words for when people get milestones, like five years, ten years, fifteen, twenty, and I'm, I'm all for that, I think that's good. I was talking about giving them a pin, that you give them some acknowledgement, team meetings, advertising on Facebook, I think that's all great, but one of the things in here, we gotta give them extra days, I mean, it gets where, you get up to like twenty, twenty-five years, you get four weeks vacation, you get twelve days of holidays, and you get another week. I just don't think that that really means as much to the people, I mean, everybody likes to have, you know, six weeks already of vacation, one more week, I don't know if it's gonna do much for you. And I talked with Mike a little bit, we talked, talked about maybe having, you know, maybe get them a gift card, or maybe have a little catalog, it's, hey, you pick something out, or something that's maybe a little bit more meaningful than just the time off, plus the fact that you start having somebody off for two months out of the year, we almost have, have a backup person, uh, to cover those for that vacation time. And that, that concerned me a little bit. So, I'd like that, whatever we like us to do is to approve this, with whatever exceptions we may have, and so I would like, I don't know, I'd like to hear you just whatever the rest. That's a good idea, give them extra days off, or maybe switch to the deal where we just deal with some kind of.
Well, my, my other question about the extra days off, do those go towards the pre-vacation, they can still act?
Um, we can make a separate date for them, if that's, um, I think it listed here that they don't move. Yeah, it will be shown as administratively with pay, so it would just go into a separate thing.
So, so they could not sell it back?
Employees, most of you is all awarded paid leave within one year of their anniversary date, the supervisor must peruse it, and paid leave will be shown after the ministry update, so it's used.
Was everybody else okay with having, where we're maybe just doing something, we get the, I feel, extra time off?
Yes.
Okay. I think we have a consideration, at least. Yeah. We're deciding on that. Well, I guess what we can do is, maybe we'll leave that and work out for right now, and then let's all come up with something, bring it up next week.
So, my only question is ongoing, I think it will be paid out in November, so would it just stay as it stands?
Well, I say probably five dollars, as far as said we're doing.
Okay.
But, you said that was because the fireman had it, everybody else, I don't have a problem with us doing that every year, but I just take the scene of the policy saying this is what. In other words, I think it should just be left up to the council with the exception of the fire department.
So, you just want to take out the five dollars and leave it?
Yes. Well, I mean, that, I would, everybody, I want to commit our future councils to something, let's just say, I think it's based on how the budget was, yeah, that'd be a budget item, yeah.
Yeah, that means I can come back and ask you more.
Yeah, that's true.
Take the two weeks vacation.
Okay, so vacation time must be taken first, what is the second half?
Well, just then you're eligible for the next week.
And then if you take any of the exempt leave, I guess.
Well, you take the vacation, that way, I mean, I just want to get it.
Because I made it to where if you take any of your exempt leave, then you cannot sell that vacation. So this basically feels.
Right, yes. But I think you already had, I don't want to change what you got about selling it back. I was going to add.
Yeah, but this also makes it.
Right.
You can sell that.
Right. Yeah. Yes, that's all I got.
And then you were fine with the tables.
No, but I noticed some of the, a couple of cities had it.
I'm sorry, I didn't do the numbers, but just the.
My idea was, we've got it, we're on the accruals, uh, you know, you're in here up to five years, you get, for a regular employee, you're getting a hundred and six dollars if you can accrue. Uh, five to ten years is two forty and ten years plus is three twenty. And my concern on that is, is that if you got a couple of tenured employees, which we actually had a couple of years ago, they all leave. We're not budgeting this amount and you're talking about a lot of bit of money that could possibly be going out. Mayor did some research and she showed me in most of the other cities, that's what they did. So, and this is what our current policy is.
Yes, current policy is that they only get paid out, uh, four weeks regardless.
Okay, so that's what the current policy is? So you were changing this?
No, no, uh, excuse me, on the back on this page two, maximum level accrual vacation will be two times the annual and then on the vacation payout.
Talking about two separate things, Mayor, I think.
Are you?
The, the, they can accrue two times their annual allotment.
But that doesn't mean.
But if they leave, they don't get paid all of that. They can only get paid for four weeks.
Yeah.
Regardless.
And that, that's current.
And I also put a clause in here too, um, if they leave city employment and they come back, they can never even exceed that four weeks. So they can't come, leave, get their four weeks, stay long enough to agree to the four weeks and then get paid out.
Right.
So I did put that in here.
Right. Anybody else have anything?
I guess, I, I think we talked about this, we did have the, a final answer. You know, where it says, uh, who is the executive team?
Yeah, I would refer to.
Reclarify that is under milestones or says in there, it just says acknowledgement by city manager at executive team meeting.
I would, I think that's like the, um, any meetings that we have, the manager meetings where we get together and discuss those. I think reworded if you want.
I'd say department heads. Unless you're referring to the council. I mean, we discussed that earlier.
Yes.
But I didn't understand if we had signed the change or not.
That's all I got. Anybody else have anything?
No, but thanks for the one line. Question. Yes. Um, the one thing on the hours work schedule, um, we will be changing the fire department that's a two and fourteen day state cycle. I know you and I have briefly discussed it months ago. But this, that's the only other major change is moving from the twenty eight day state cycle where it's a fourteen day, so it'd be in line with our police department because administratively, it makes it very easy to make them here when processing their fine sheets because they have a four week. Uh, pay period where most everybody else has a two week, so you have to constantly look back at your fine sheets to make sure that they're, uh, overtime approved properly. So. This will reestablish a, um, shorter pay period for them. It won't necessarily affect them. Um, it will change how we process.
Never seen a motion that we approved this with taking out the longevity pay of five dollars per month, leaving it up to the council. Uh, there'll be an update as far as what the person will give out of a catalog or gift or something like that. And adding the sentence about vacation time will take out first exempt employees.
Would you say?
No, I think we can go ahead and approve it.
If you approve it, I will, I will make sure it will get the policy.
You can say approval of this. With the end of these changes.
Right. Alright. My word of advice, stated by Scott Temple to approve the personnel policy with the exceptions that we noticed. And discussion, all in favor? Selco? Yes, sir. Alright, let's switch back and go back. Alright, we're getting back to number one here. Uh, discuss and consider take possible action on ordinance from city council, city of Gosh, but autograph condition is city of Gosh with pictures. General obligation refund and body series twenty twenty one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies for my tardiness. Another council meeting, talking about the exact same thing, just up the road a minute ago.
You didn't get my rate, did you?
I, you'd be pleased to know that, that you did in fact give a very attractive rate, uh, different bond structure, so it's hard to compare the two. Uh, but, or, we are very pleased with the result. So my partner Mark Clane was here last time, my name is Andrew Freeman. Uh, received bids at noon today and behind the first page you can see we received five bids. The best bid came from Amagi Bank at a fixed interest rate of one point five eight percent. We then adjust for various purchaser costs. You can see what you can cross their bids. Uh, they vary from zero all the way to ten thousand dollars, which I would tell you is, is egregious and that's probably. That last, that last bidder, that ten thousand dollars drove their rate up significantly. We like to, we like to account for that to make all of these bids apple to apples comparisons. That's what we've done here. So with the adjustment, it pitched that winning bid up to one point five eight seven three percent. Behind this next page is the summary of this refunding result. Uh, the box to the far right shows a preliminary result is what you all looked at previously. Uh, we brought this refunding to your attention to get a agreement to proceed with. How on the right of that, the final is based on that final interest rate. So we were considering, uh, saving roughly ninety five, ninety six thousand dollars by restructuring this debt. Uh, before you this evening for your action is to lock in a savings of one hundred and twenty two thousand, six hundred and two dollars. That's net of all cost of issuance, that's the nominal value saving city will receive over the course of, uh, eleven years. And that's what's detailed on the right side, uh, of this spreadsheet. Uh, the prior debt service and the annual debt service city would pay to nothing. The right of that is with this new interest rate, the difference between each of those years is an annual saving city will receive. So. We are replacing a fixed interest rate debt with a fixed interest rate debt and we are not extending the amortization of the loans. So the original, uh, general obligation bonds two thousand and twelve were set to mature in twenty thirty two. These new bonds will mature in twenty thirty two. So, uh, there's no reason not to proceed with this. We're locking in savings at lower rates. Uh, we have seen interest rates moving against us the last three weeks. It's been over partially sell off in the bond market, meaning the interest rates going up. Due most of the fact that we got, uh, in my perspective, uh, inflation creeping up, the Federal Reserve is keeping, uh, their, their interest rates near zero, but they've indicated they're going to start tapering their bond line program. And they intend on raising their base interest rate starting as early as twenty twenty three. So all of those different economic factors that led bond investors to start demanding a higher interest rate. So very happy with, with this result. We always try to be conservative, so we showed one point seven five percent. As we've been looking at this, that we want to be in a position to, uh, under promise to you all and over deliver. And I'm happy to be able to have done that today because I've had another bond refunding where we were a little too close to the market and we had to come in and say, no, this actually. Got a little bit more still worth proceeding with, but, uh, so pleased to present this result to you both. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. This is information. Why does the debt service go like one sixty one, one sixty two, one sixty two, back to one sixty one, down to one sixty and up to one sixty? Why is the fluctuation?
So bonds are sold in one thousand dollar increments, uh, and, and that's what we were supposed to be saying bond. In reality, they're sold in five thousand dollar denomination. So when we try to solve for a, a strictly level bond payment every year, like you might see in your mortgage amortization, we're bound by five thousand dollar lots as principal. And so depending on what that interest rate is, uh, and how it's trying to kind of solve these odd lot sizes all the way down, it'll, we can always get close to a number, but it's never exact. It's just within five thousand dollars. And that, it's just a function of how bond purchasers buy bonds and lots.
So we're locked into the, the interest rate that you quoted here. If we approve it to that, we're locked in.
Absolutely.
Any may ask, any question?
That, that's also why I say we just want to learn so much from your.
That's correct. Yes, sir. It, it, they're all within five thousand dollars.
Ready for a motion to save one hundred and one two thousand dollars? Alright, second. Now, the motion by Angela Nicholson, number one, to approve the refunding of the bonds. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Most curious, so, zero. Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Good to see you. Always good to hear.
Easy presentations to give.
Alright, now we're going to go to number six. Hopefully I missed it. Okay. Discuss and consider take possible action on accepting dedication deed for stadium private extension flight.
Mayor, this is something that's been talked about for a number of years where the developer in Joshua Station, um, Mr. Tolson has talked about conveying the, what is now currently the private drive that runs directly. Off the stadium drive and runs beside the brookshires, um, and then dead ends down, uh, at the end of that where that second section of available property is. The, uh, of course it lines up with the intersection. The intersection is already, uh, uh, set up with its, it's controlled with the traffic signal. And this allow, basically allows that street to extend, uh, for the businesses and so forth to go in those areas can be addressed onto that street. It would in essence extend stadium drive, um, to the property that's just to the east of the Y M C A where it dead ends. Um, the concern has been recently that there was some damage created, uh, when the Burger King built and the contractor opened up this part of roadway to tie into the sewer lane. And what was supposed to be opened up for just a few days turned out to be many, many weeks. And so the, it undermined the, and destabilized the soil. Under some of the drive and that collapsed. That has since been repaired. Um, there was a, a general contractor hired to make that repair. Uh, that contractor is known to the city. Um, we've used him for some projects before. Uh, there was no inspection requirement, um, because it was, uh, a, a private drive, so it's kind of like parking lot. Um, there was no inspection requirement to fix it. So there was no soil testing done. There was no compaction testing done to find out, um, just. Exactly how the, the soil was compacted in there. Uh, but it, it, it was fixed. I, I looked at it and, you know, of course it was leveled. We sent Kristen out. Uh, Kristen questioned about some compaction data. Um, there was none available, but there was also none required. And so, um, the, the concrete has been fixed now. It's been fixed for a few months anyway. Um, and, and so for now, I mean, I, I think the whole thing is stable. I think the McDonald's restaurant would like to see this happen because that kind of guarantees them. Access in and out onto a public right of way. That could be an issue for future development too, where, uh, and so that we're not creating any flag lots, depending on, I don't know how far the water lines go down that road. That could become an issue of easements and this right here, but this would solve that issue. So, Mr. Tolson is logged in, uh, if y'all have some questions. I don't really have a recommendation one way or the other. Um, Kristen provided, uh, there's some photographs of the rebar that was laid in and the size of the area that was repaired. I'm sure most of you are familiar with it because if you drove through there, uh, going to Brookshire or something, then you hit it, you knew where you were.
I said, I understand from McDonald's standpoint, they're willing, uh, like I said, I have a follow with the city taking it over, but what I would like to see is a five year maintenance agreement. That way we know for sure, there's plenty of time with the past. There's some other areas that are a little bit bumpy, they're okay. I would like to just, uh, make sure the city's covered and I would also like. Whenever the ordinance is written up to have a process in there that city has to be notified six months prior to the expiration of the maintenance agreement. So that city staff is aware in the future that, hey, we're getting ready to lose this maintenance bond. If there was something to be done, uh, we'd give them a chance back. Past, we've had a situation, not quite the same, but something came up and expired and we weren't really realizing that it was expiring at that time. I would like to see that's put in there, like I said, last year, uh, late. Anybody else? I bring a horn. Billy, did you want to say anything? Billy? You want to say something? Are you on top?
I see you.
He's muted. You're muted. We need to unmute it?
No, he's unmuted. It may be his headset.
You got a sign language?
It's done somewhere.
How about this? Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. Very good. Uh, I had trouble hearing what the last gentleman said after Mr., Mr. Mayor spoke. Um, Mr. Mayor, did you say, uh, a, a, you, you mentioned that, can you tell me the time period of the maintenance bond you're requesting?
Yes, five years.
Okay, five years. Okay. I'm agreeable to that.
Good.
Uh, you know, Mike kind of said it perfectly. You know, I think this benefits the city as well. You have a little more control over the development, especially as it comes to future curb cuts and driveways easements. Prevent any sort of flag lot issue as well. Um, you know, truth be told, if we, if another developer comes around and wants to buy the, the leftover eight acres, you know, you won't be dealing with me anymore. So it's probably a good idea to have, uh, a little more control over that driveway. And I think it's always been kind of a foreseen that we would turn this driveway over to the city as we did with Joshua Boulevard many years ago. So, um, you know, happy that McDonald's has come in and, and, uh, essentially, uh, instigated this issue, but it's something that we always foresaw, uh, that we would do. So, um, you know, I'm agreeable to the, a five year maintenance bond. I think that's appropriate in this case. And, um, we could, in terms of a timeframe and a form and manner, um, you know, we have a dedication deed prepared that city attorney Terry Welch is blessed. And, you know, we could have, uh, we could formally hand the roadway over, uh, contemporaneous with the McDonald's, uh, closing, which would probably be at this point. Um, I think they'll probably open for business March first. That's my, my best guess. They think they can build front in about a hundred days from the time they get their permits. So, um, you know, I'll leave, I'll leave it to you to, to express when, when you want to do the handover, but it would seem that it only makes sense to, to hand it over, uh, when the McDonald's deal, uh, uh, you know, closes, which is on, uh, the day they open, so.
Alright, like I said, and I don't want to pick it up. The only other thing I wanted to add, I guess Terry, is that something we put in there to notify the city so that we get notified? Or is that just something we need to put on the calendar?
One question I would have is, and this maybe Billy can answer this, is, is, and Mike, I was just talking about, about getting a maintenance bond for construction that's already been completed. And so we may want to do, again, I, I, I don't know how you'd price that on submit to complete it, cause, but maybe you can get a bond for that. Maybe the alternative would be getting a, a five year maintenance bond isn't, isn't available or is, is too costly to enter the five year maintenance agreement. Instead, they're obligating someone in case you can't get the maintenance bond. Normally maintenance bonds are, are done with new construction and it is, you know, X number of years after, the, after the city accepts the construction. So. This part of this roadway is already completed. So I'm, I think you get a maintenance bond on the park that's not been built. I don't think that'd be a problem, but, but I'm, I'm not sure how readily available getting a bond would be on submit or if it's completed.
So Billy, have you spoke to anybody about a maintenance bond?
I have not, but, but I understa-, I can, I agree with the gentleman who just said that in, in usually you do this at the same time that you have a development agreement and you effectuate that before any concrete's been poured. But, um, you know, I did plan on, on speaking. I wanted to find out some details on, on term length, obviously. Um, but you know, if it's a maintenance agreement, that's, that's the only thing that we can implement. I think that'll be fair because I'll, you know, I can make sure that run, that will run with the land, um, for any, you know, success, users and successors and interests. Um, I, you know. I, I think that's something we, we should look into as well. I'll go for the bond first and see if that's not something that's not too cost prohibitive. Uh, I estimate it'll be anywhere between two to four percent of the value of the roadway. Um, so I'll just have to see what that's going to be. But, um, it, you know, I'll, I'll look at it and the alternative, if that doesn't work out, I, I think a maintenance a- agreement would be sufficient for, for our purposes and I'm agreeable to that.
Terry, can we just, uh, approve this subject to either getting a maintenance bond or working out a maintenance agreement? Go ahead and approve it in principle.
Right, maybe draft the motion.
Okay.
Yes. When you have that road constructed, uh, did they do soil tests and packing information and all that kind of stuff? Might be able to give us about that road?
Yes, I've got thorough records. I can review that. That was a, a few years before I came on the project, but we have all those records. I can review those and provide them if applicable.
I think it'd be a good idea for the city to have those.
You talking about soil test on the repair or the road?
The whole road.
We already have that. We have that.
Okay, never mind, Billy, we already got it.
Okay, very good.
Mike, you had that road fifteen years old. It's not, that thing approached, didn't that get put in when they approached?
Yeah, it's not that hard of a, that one's not. It's, it's eight or 10 years old, I think.
About two thousand twelve or thirteen.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, and, and this section's the only section really that, that there was a problem in. The rest of it's fine.
No, it's good. They put, they had to dig the street up.
Yes, I'm aware. Well, I was just, the point I was making was the rest of the road is okay. We, we haven't had any problem. That's why we're pretty sure that it was because they opened it up.
Right.
Let me ask one question, I can ask for, for Billy, and that is, you want the dedication deed to be effective on the date of opening at McDonald's?
Yes, I think that, uh, while McDonald's is constructing, you know, they're, they're very concerned about their curb cuts. They want to make sure that their, their two curb cuts, which have been approved, uh, you know. On a private roadway are the curb cuts that they can implement. And I think it's, it's, it's probably better to let them do the work that they want to do, uh, under those, over, under the guise of a private, uh, venture. And then at that point. Once they're ready to open for business, you know, we can do the handoff. That would also, uh, you know, help me in the sense that if there's any issues with the roadway, I'm dealing with McDonald's. If they need to fix, you know, if the curb cut needs to be cleaned up, they're dealing with me, um, under the guise of our contract that we have, our purchase agreement. So I think that while they're under construction, it's, it's, it's better if I deal with them directly. Does that make sense?
Right, right. What I, what I want to make sure is we have to convey the property on a specific date. And so we made this subject, so the opening of McDonald's, I just want to make sure that we won't convey the property until that time.
Right, yes. I think that, that, that's, yes.
Make sure we're on the same page here. I don't want to kind of convince these nine and then say it's ours today and let's go.
Right, okay. So we're looking at a March first, twenty twenty two day.
Yeah, correct. And, yeah, and I, and that is, that's a little bit of a floating date, just based on McDonald's has, you know, they're, they're commencing rent the day that they open for business. Or the earlier of a hundred and thirty days after they receive their permits. So I can, I can pretty much say that, you know, the day that they receive their permits, I can add a hundred and thirty days to that and that would be our drop dead date.
Hey. So Terry, what we.
The motion be, I move to authorize the mayor to execute a dedication deed for the stadium drive extension with a five year maintenance bond be provided. Uh, further, in the event of such maintenance bond is not available, a five year maintenance agreement acceptable, acceptable to the city shall be provided. The conveyance shall be effective on the date of the opening of McDonald's. And that, again, with that, with that contingency, if McDonald's never opens, we don't sign the deed if something happens.
Correct.
And then can we put something in there though about when we get notified, six months prior to the expiration of, is that something that we can do? Just so that, like I said, five years, there may not be any of us here then. I'd like somebody to tell, hey, that thing's expired.
Um, who would notify us?
Well, I'd leave it up to Billy, because that way he, he has to notify us that it's expiring and then we know that, okay, that's that part. Um, I always said sometimes some of the bond people will actually do that. And I don't know whether we can make that part of the bonding agreement that, you know, they notify the city six months prior to it expiring. I don't know, maybe I'm just blowing smoke, but like I said, it just seems like, you know, these things that are lasting five years and nobody knows about it.
I mean.
Well, Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. Mayor, in this case, if, if the bond is not required, that means the roadway held up. And so, you know, at that point, if the roadway starts to diminish a little bit after that five year period, um. Yeah, I mean, uh, i- if it lasts through the five years, then there's really, you're not going to have any notification at all. Um, I, I'm not really sure what, what I, what I can do because if I'm, if I, you know, exit the project. Um, I'm not sure I want to be bound by something that, that, that I can't fulfill. Um, but I, I'm not sure if that's something the city wants to e- e- enact in its own calendars. I mean, I'll, I'll do my best to, to notify. Um, I'm just not sure how, how to eff- effectuate that in the maintenance agreement.
Terry, you got any ideas?
Well, we've talked about, I'm sorry, we can put this on a calendar to trigger an annual inspection from Kristen. Um, that would be. That's, that would tell us. We can do that internally. We can schedule that inspection out.
That's fine, just leave it on.
Okay, okay.
Alright, so I'll entertain the motion. Thanks, John.
Terry, you have a quick question. So you said that we do have access to the records for the soil testing and everything like that, correct?
Has anybody reviewed that in the last, say, month?
The soil testing data?
Correct.
No, it's probably not been reviewed in years. I mean, it was, it was done when they originally built the project. So it's, there's a huge file of all the plans and the original documents from when Joshua Station Boulevard was built. The Miss Road was built a few years following that. Um, but we have all the construction plans, the inspection documents, all that, that stuff we have.
So in twenty nineteen, I was reviewing some of the documents for the Y M C A when it was built. And I believe that there was an issue soil in that area.
There was. That all used to be a peanut farm, very sandy. So they had to support the walls, the tilt slab walls of the Y, they had to bring in a bunch of select fill. Pull out a bunch of the sandy soil and put that in there so it's thick, packed tight enough to support the weight of the building.
So is anything similar done in this area for the construction of this road? Because this is how Brookshires gets.
There, there was on the Brookshires, they had to do some, some soil mixing also, again, because of the weight of that building. The weight of the roadway, I don't think there was any done for any of that. Soil testing didn't, uh, come back to, of course, you're talking, talking about a huge difference in weight also. Uh, but I, I don't know that there was any soil mixing done on the roadway. We can look at that and see, but I don't think there was.
But the city actually approves the plan, so.
Yeah, they were inspected and approved.
Tests were appropriate.
Well, the, the engineer, engine, T. Donald Perkins would have, the engineer would have inspected and looked at all that data. And we, we, we do soil testing here for our projects, our projects that, that we're responsible for. We hire the testing company so that the results come directly to. We hire the testing company so that the results come directly to us, not to someone else, so that we get them. And in this case, under the roadway of Joshua Station Boulevard. And under this part of the roadway, that test data came here, so we have it.
I'll entertain a motion for what Terry read. I'll make the motion. Merle, second by Black, yes, to approve accepting the dedication deed for stadium drive extension for the motion that Terry read. In the other discussion, all in favor? Motion, Terry, six one. Next, discuss considering possible action on the development agreement between the city of Joshua and S R E Joshua Development. Known as the Locking Bird Fields Edition, outlining the construction of public improvements and the S R O funds for construction or reconstruction of a portion of the road. And authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Because there are, Mayor, Council, because there are public improvements warranted in this development, as well as building materials for construction. Fees in place, apartment dedication and occupancy of city offices and buildings, bringing the possibility to execute between the city and the. The developer. Additionally, the city requires S R O funds from the the developer for the construction or reconstruction of future improvements of road fronts to serve the developer's property. And so the staff recommends approval, and I guess. Provided.
One thing we found on this is that we've made some changes where P N C has the capability now to approve the final flats. But part of what's supposed to happen is it's supposed to be an H O A created. In fact, didn't happen, the documents weren't in there. So we've made a change to this particular ordinance stating that no permits will be issued until that H O A. Has been established and set up. Now, the other thing, this we're also approving to that actual development agreement where this is where we work with developers to. You know, we give a little, they give a little, and I love it. So I guess on this one, what we're basically agreeing. They agreed to do the follow the brick standards that we've established for R one, which is about seventy five, eighty percent.
Yeah.
Or can we do that? Well, we can't unless we're doing a development.
We can't do it by ordinance. We can do it by contract.
Right. So that's what the development agreement is. So we've also got two here, our, excuse me, tree policy in there where they've got to plant so many trees. We've got the park funds, but is there anything else, Mike, that we typically would see in the development agreement? I want to make sure we got everything sorted here.
Yeah, there's there's some stuff where they have to. Maintain the open space and detention and not, but I think they already have all that. Most of that detention is already closed.
Was that in here?
Part of this.
But I mean, we need to approve that because that needs to be in the development.
No, that's in the engineering.
Okay.
And also, it's part of the the final class of the phase one. It's located on.
Okay. Again, I just want to make sure we got everything that was normally in the development agreement. Usually, we're doing that a little bit further back and not including some policies in place to make sure we get that. Where we'll be seeing the development.
They do. They're doing sidewalks in here, too, right?
No.
How's that happen?
Well.
To give your number two here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why are the levels here? We have any questions?
Okay, why aren't we putting sidewalks?
Well, he is.
Oh, they are. They're they're in here.
No, they're wrapped.
They're yeah.
And carbon gunners?
Yes.
Phase two, that's going to happen.
The phase two's got the bigger lots, the eleven or twelve, one acre lot. That that's where the sidewalks won't be.
Okay, that's fine.
Why? Good.
Why?
Because they're going to be bar ditches. They're they're. The drainage and the they couldn't get sewer up there. So they're going to have there. It's going to be a little bit different feel, larger lots with the septic, so we're going to do more of that real feel.
But it's only small.
There's only eleven, I think, eleven or twelve. One acre lots.
It's on the far west side.
Right.
Yes.
So in our code somewhere, we make people that are developing have to have an H O A?
Yes, only if there's public improvement.
Yeah.
If if there's improvements for open space, for detention ponds, landscaping, irrigation, things like that. If they don't have any of that, they don't have to, but.
The Cooper Valley, they're having. So that whole island right there that just goes crazy, that's the city, you just kind of look at it. There's an H O A.
The H O A, that is, those public improvements are private property. Which is why you have an H O A is in the guarantee they maintain. Those are all private property and if if something goes wrong with them, there's no ability. We can't go on private property and fix it. So the H O A has the responsibility to maintain those.
Even though it's for public property.
Pardon?
Even though it's public property.
It's not.
It's not private.
It's on private property. So when you have.
That's private, that's not.
Any other questions? What is the S R O funds for reconstruction, construction of a portion of the road?
Well, we're working on engineering for Cato now. And there's a portion of that. That'll be covered by the by the developer that'll go in with the funds that we're using to to make the improvement to the road. Right now, it's in. They're almost finished with the engineering. Now, that one, we're trying to time. For construction when school is out because it's very heavily traveled during school, the school time. So we're working on, we're working on that stuff right now with freeze nickel. So I think those plans are about seventy five, eighty percent component.
So since this is a beauty, how much? I know that it's probably in here, it's dancing part of there's a lot of stuff to go with. Did we, how much do we give up on the lot size? What's going to be the minimum lot size?
Is this one with? Eight thousand?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand, okay.
I just have a picture. We had several, I said, some one acre lots, like something. So that's what.
Any other questions? Actually, I do. So for this. Everything nowadays is getting bigger, 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 bigger. The the aprabs that were purchased for our apartment, is that getting bigger overall? Because when we think about the size of the streets that we're allowing right now, people are parking on both sides. I'm worried about if things are still getting bigger, do we need to start looking at making the road or? We can't do it here, probably. I guess if we can, but. Well, I'm worried about apparatus getting down.
This roadway meets the what our ordinance requires, and if cars are parked on both sides of the street, we should have a fire truck down the middle of it. This new truck we're buying is longer, not a whole lot wider, but it it is a couple of front, two, three feet longer. It's got a dual axle on it, but it but it it will fit down the street.
And the other one, when we first kind of just moved cars out of the way.
We're hoping they don't do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe, yeah.
It, yeah, I mean, the fire marshal reviews all of that stuff also, the roadway, so we wish we're.
What are we on, streets, thirty foot streets or a lot of streets?
Thirty six, I believe.
Thirty two.
The setbacks here aren't like what. Some previous areas are too, so there's probably going to be some cars on the street, not like some neighborhoods where they just don't have any driveway. Capacity. It hasn't been, we really only got the problem in a couple of areas. And you and just so you know, if you haven't been down there for the development, just to the east of this heritage. That that looks very nice. They did a nice job putting that together. It's going to be a nice addition.
We're almost done. All right, any other questions around that? I'll entertain a motion. For a motion of second. Motion, I'd like to say, to approve the development agreement from the city of Joshua and S R E Joshua Development on the Locking Bird Fields. Construction of public improvements, S R O funds for the construction or reconstruction of a portion of the road, authorizing the city manager. Further discussion?
I want you to read the whole bill.
Yeah.
She can't have a saying with her ass.
All right, all in favor? Motion, Terry, seven zero. Appreciate everybody saying, double have to say it, Paul. Uh, Van Gress, staff reports. You guys have any questions about staff reports?
I wanted to ask you, I'm looking at all this. Fire control. I'm just trying to make sure the numbers match up. So we had one structural fire, one grass fire. Okay, when we look down here, we had. Under structural fire, we had zero adequate responses and two inadequate responses. So the structural fire and the grass fires are included together. We did not have adequate response to those two. So so we only had one structural fire, we got staffing levels, our only zero. But we had two inadequate. Where's the other structural fire?
One year, yeah, there's a.
Now, that's in the same column system per month.
Page you on, Scott. I'm on page one of the fire department. What's the personnel?
Structural fires? Structural fires, I said zero previous month, one current month, two year today.
Okay, that was yours, sir? But down at the bottom, where it says staffing levels. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I I I wanted to see. We see you had one structural fire, one grass fire, and a whole thirty nine. Euro adequate response under structural fires only and two inadequate. So was there a structural fire or is that just this?
I don't know.
A problem.
End of entry.
And and that's fine. I I just I just noticed that it's like. We missed out somewhere or whatever.
This report was in two, three months, a year.
That's why I'm not even looking at the year today, because I'm just looking at it per month. And again, I I'll I'll say the same thing I said a couple of months ago. The the response times, the the response adequate being responded to so and so. I I'm just overwhelmed at how well we're doing. Thank you for your your hard work against this. Oh, it's on there. Oh, that's. That's a good man, huh? Right. Right, and 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 I understand that if you didn't have enough manpower. You know, again, that's that's what I'm looking at, is you know, you got one structural fire and then you go structural fire only, so that's how we're doing one of those.
I wonder if it could be because there's cities, you got one structural fire in the city and one structural fire in county, maybe that's where the. If you look at the top box, city, you run under that county.
Right.
And each of them shows one structure box. Maybe that's how we got two. One was in the city and one was in the county. They are good.
Okay, thank you. I I have no sense.
Chief, I would, if I may speak to the council, if you need assistance in volunteer recruiting, get around to getting things put together. You know, I'd be willing to come and instead play with you guys to direct you.
You willing to put on some bug here and fax some?
Need somebody to carry a hose. I have to learn somebody to carry it.
Hey, I'll call you about this other deal since I get.
Police report. Officer Park is visiting. And his his restraint, he finally honestly in that pursuit. He he got many check-ins for that. That is, it is awesome. Don't stay stay out there, but keep busy. We appreciate what you're doing for us.
Unfortunately, the officer park is not injured.
See, the way they broke his arm.
He separated his muscle, his affective spec muscle. He was doing, he does, he does martial arts all the time. He was trained and he separated his affective muscle. Water surgery, and so he was on my. But we have put him to work. He is going to accomplish a good thing.
It's it's great. Well, I've gotten that down with somebody before and seen our officers being present, letting people know that we are paying attention. I know we had an accident not too long ago, right around nine seventeen or whatever, was it another right turn? On yellow flashing accident or was it somebody running the stoplight?
Yeah, it's a missing.
Yeah, that that thing's. I like those things when when you're setting your way to turn, man, there's dangers.
And we've already got two and another.
Yeah.
Chief, your guys. Yes, yesterday, the day before yesterday, coming down Main Street, I was close to the park. And a car drew, I guess I wasn't going fast enough to suit them. They whizzed right directly around me just before they got up to Spring Valley. And right, almost as they were even with passing me, one of your officers was sitting in that little driveway, got that gas well. They just took right on off after they're after.
I wanted to let you know. So I talked to some of the officers around here, and morale seems to be. On on the up, which is great. I want to thank you for that. I think it's first leadership you brought. And and really having, you know, rallying behind your 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 lab officers. I mean, it's it shows people are happy, people are working, and that's great. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I I think the fire department and the police department have really, really done great the last. Last little while. Just looking on the real serious upturn, and especially in a time of growth, the brand looks well.
And I think the citizens recognize it as well.
They do.
Good comments on Facebook. That's rare, so.
It is rare because you you, Merle, you know, when we first moved here about around nineteen seventy nine and Joshua had a kind of a bully mentality of this speed trap. But I think people are respecting it now. It's not a speed trap. They just say, hey, these are school zones. These are areas where the. Speed limit drops and we need to do this, that. You're seeing it, there's enforcement, they respect it. At least the law makes it so. So thank you, Jerry.
Appreciate it.
We we still be noted as a speed factor. Well, good question. I got a question.
Yes.
Does C T one hundred give a lifesaving award to two of your officers? I think, was it my two of them up here?
Yeah, there's there's something coming up. They gave one here. But there's another another case that that is just going through the process now.
Is that the same one that we were talking about, the mouth to mouth or?
The C T R, yes.
Lifesaving?
Yes.
Okay, so.
Yeah, they'll get that second.
Just, I was going to report that, but I didn't know if we'd already given.
Yeah, it's it's our, it hasn't been given yet, I don't believe, but it has been reported. It's in the works.
Didn't we give two officers?
With the fire department and the police.
Yeah. Thank you.
We can give them, yeah.
Well, no, no.
Well, no, no. The C P one hundred usually gives a real good, I don't know if they give a tax award or what it is, but they usually make a good presentation and come up here to the city and do it. There are other organizations within the city that can give, you know, awards and everything of that nature.
I think you all need to step up and get it going. I'm not president right here. Do we have any other agenda? I don't push the mayor. Do we have anything else on the agenda?
Why you want to go home?
I just want you.
Aaron, I got a quick question. What are they going to put into the old X sign, I'd ask, because we get up the gas station or they go something different?
Yeah, the same, same thing. What about the, uh, auto, used to be the auto place down nearby U N C?
Yeah, U N C.
Well, that's one of the.
Yeah, land shape nursery with a tree trimmings, guys in arborist. And that right here is going to have some retail stuff. Yes, looking nice over there.
I'm going to get.
A what?
Bar.
Yeah, Al's just moving down, downtown. Where the Mojos was.
All right, any other questions or reports? You ready to get, get your, get up? Just didn't ready to say.
I would like the city manager to report on how things are going as far as the infrastructure for better, uh, internet within the city and also has there been any contact with any of the cell phone companies trying to improve our cell phones here? It's, it's sad to be in Comanche and have five G, five bar service. And I'm sitting in Joshua, five miles from Metroplex, and I can't really get an A T and P call in my house.
Like you already had one, you have, or got one set up for somebody.
We, we've met with both on the, the I T issue. Um, we've only got numbers from one. I've reached out to United Co-op, uh, and they're going to try and get that finalized to get to. But I'll have a report for you next week. And I'll add the cell phone stuff to it also.
Appreciate that.
I know we've got one cell phone on our antenna here.
Yeah, you lose a lot of A T and P going down.
Eighty will drop and rise. It doesn't matter what.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a dead spot.
Yeah, it starts from about ten foot from this tower and goes out.
Go one, two, right.
I'll see, I'll see what we can, we'll reach out to them, see.
I like it. These are, these set here.
These two.
Those are yours.
Like, um, I know a lot of them, but you can't use to have an app on your phone that you can afford like a D S P.
Reporting it every time I talk.
Bet you have too.
You ready to hold?
That's for my, our.
Not my girl.
Yeah. All right, no more questions for Terry? You go free.